Welcome, everybody. Oak is in the house. So first, a report on closed session. The board took no action during closed session. And now, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Minch and Riley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and...
It's Nico.
Miko.
Nico and Riley.
Nico. I'm sorry.
That's my last name.
Nico and Riley, thank you for coming up and leading us. And we have a special treat tonight. Tanil Bennett, who is our sign language instructor at the high school, is going to sign the Pledge of Allegiance for us as well.
And two students?
And two students. Very exciting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That's super cool. And now, I will turn the stage over to our famous Oak Choir to share with us a patriotic song.
We will be singing our hymn, "The Black Limpin' Bandits," our single banner. And then...
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And it's no surprise that as they move up to our high school, our show choir has been grand champions for the last... I can't even keep track. I have to take off my shoes to count the number of years. So, thank you so much. Next up is the Board President's report. And I am very pleased to tell you a little bit more about our American Sign Language class under the guidance of Tanil Bennett. We currently have 158 students that are participating. And we have Sign Language 1, 2, and 3. It used to be an ROP class on our campus, and now it's our class. And UC recently included American Sign Language as a foreign language. And so, taking it at the high school meets the foreign language requirements. In addition, as kids take 1, 2, and 3, ultimately, they'll be able to earn a cord that they'll wear during graduation. So, I think it's super cool, the class. And you guys got to witness a little bit of what it's all about with the students and our teacher showing you how they can sign the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to now invite Tanil Bennett up to give us a little bit more information about the class and to introduce her students that are here with her tonight.
Thank you for coming. I have two students here with me. They're actually ASL 1 students, so it's their first year. And they're just the most passionate and excited about the class. So, I have Miranda Rojas. And my other student here is Matthew Berry. And so, as Dr. Barki said, we have 1, 2, and 3 right now. My department's gotten together, and we're going to be planning and writing the curriculum for ASL 4. So, we'll see how that goes. And hopefully, we can get that off the ground fairly soon. It's just a really exciting class. We do... We have guest speakers. We do a lot of interacting partner work and learning the language and the culture. So, it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. And we're hoping to make this part of our regular board meeting, that we have somebody come and sign the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of our board meeting. We've got a really cool, short video to show you as well. Tina, if you'd put that on.
I think that American Sign Language is a valuable class to teach here at Los Alamos because it's something that can be used across all of the United States. It qualifies as a language. It's one of the fastest-growing languages right now in the United States. And we have a growing population of deaf people. American Sign Language is one of the few languages that actually uses both sides of the brain. It uses the artistic as well as the linguistic side. So, it's a perfect fit for students that tend to be a little more artistic, that group of students that's a little bit different. It's really fun, and it's a great environment to do a lot of learning. And I personally love languages. So, this class gave me a lot of opportunities to learn more about different cultures and people. It's a way to connect with more of the world. And I will definitely pursue ASL interpreting because it's just so cool and looks really fun.
It's fun talking, like signing to deaf people and learning about their experiences from growing up and everything, and just the difference in cultures. I don't know, I thought it was more fun because you're interacting with the person instead of just speaking to one, and that you have to actually pay attention and focus in on the conversation. I think later on down the road, there'll be more job opportunities for me because not
There are actually a lot of opportunities for Sign Language interpreters, if that's the right word. I know, for example, at Hoag Hospital, they have a full-time Sign Language interpreter. So, if there's a deaf patient, they provide that service. And if I see a patient in my office that needs a Sign Language interpreter, I can call the hospital, and that person, they'll make arrangements for that person to come over. There are opportunities for those folks, especially because there's not a lot of them. All right. Well, thank you. That was super cool. I will now turn it over for our student board member report. Angelica.
Good evening, President Barki, esteemed board members, Dr. Crop, committee, and community. This is my fifth board report of the year. Okay, so, arts at Los Alamitos High School. Our drama program debuted "The Canterbury Tales," a four-day production on Wednesday to the Oak and McAuliffe Theater Programs. The most exciting part about this production is that it was 100% done by students. That includes the props, the costumes, the set, et cetera. So, congratulations to drama. Athletics at Los Alamitos High School. We had electrifying results at our... At our pink game, which was against Corona del Mar, with a 7-7 tie. Unfortunately, the game was canceled after the first quarter, but we'll get them next year. Don't worry. This game was also a breast cancer awareness game, and so, all the students raised money in awareness for breast cancer. Our cross-country team had their last meet last Saturday, and 51 runners participated with seven personal records made. Activities at Los Alamitos are in full swing as our staff tries to connect with our students through lunchtime activities and dress-out days. This week in particular is Red Ribbon Week and Peace Week. Yesterday was Wear Red and Get a Free Donut from ASB. And Tuesday, or today, was Limbo at Lunch and Dress as a Meme. Tomorrow is Tie-Dye at Lunch and Wear Sunglasses. Thursday is Spike Ball at Lunch and Twin Day. And Friday is Musical Chairs and Tie-Dye. Also, we are honored to have recruiters come to our school at lunch and engage students with their favorite activity of pull-ups while also talking about military options after high school. Academics at Los Alamitos are thriving as always. As you can see, we learn inside, outside, and all around campus. This is Mr. Valenzuela's robotics class, learning how to use their solar-powered cars around campus. And in the second picture, you can see excited biology students learning about the history of photosynthesis in our upgraded lecture hall. You guys should come visit. Thank you, and go Griffins.
Thank you, Angelica. Dr. Crop, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Well, you know what? That's something to follow her. Angelica, that was awesome. Good job. And so, I have a couple of things I want to talk about today. My first one is the 6th grade summit. And so, I just want to say that Oak Principal, Mrs. Kaminski, I'm sure, and others will talk about that. But it was our first year that we kicked that off for our middle school cares program. So, I'm going to let her give more details. But we had it at Oak on Monday, and just so everyone knows. And then, we had it at McAuliffe on Tuesday. So, we did it at both of our middle schools. And then, the second thing is that we had our second Human Relations Focus Group meeting, which was just last Friday. But hot off the press, so we had 35 people, amazing, that met with together twice. And Friday was again our second time. And so, they came up with priorities, divided into groups. We had several categories. People were given dots where they could make their voices heard even after all of the sharing out. And so, out of that came many recommendations. And one of which is that we hire a facilitator to move forward with expertise as a facilitator to help us put that task force together. So, taking the recommendations from the focus group and making that happen. And I wanted to just remind the board, although I'm sure you didn't forget, but we have a longstanding history with task forces when something has surfaced until it becomes institutionalized. So, we did have a task force about safety and bullying and violence prevention and substance abuse. And initially, when we started the Safety Task Force, we hired a district safety facilitator. You might remember, we hired Don Farrell, who was our expert and came in and helped us do that. So, although different, and the topics are different, I think that process will be similar in that we're looking for that type of level of expertise that can come in and help us get started and be even better and really make growth and come together and programs that unite us. And so, the third, I will keep you posted. Our next board meeting, I think, is November 13th. By then, we should be able to post. We're hoping to post this week and get moving on that process and remind the public and you that we do post for 10 days. And then, that process will start, but we'll be able to give an update to the board. And I know there's no approval seeking right now, but I fully realize that a contract will come to you before any decisions are made. And then, lastly, I'm also super excited about our dual enrollment program. We had a brief workshop on that, but it's super exciting, and it's new at our high school. And I did see our principal. I don't know if he's still here, Dr. Stone. Are you here somewhere?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, too. And so, but I'm going to ask one of our leaders with this process, with Dr. Stone, our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Reed, to give a pretty brief update on our exciting new dual enrollment program.
Thank you, Dr. Crop, President Barki, members of the board, community. Oak Lions, welcome. I am really excited to give a brief update. Dr. Stone and I actually attended a breakfast this morning at Cypress Community College to hear from across the county of how dual enrollment is working and to learn from our counterparts across the county. And so, some of you may be asking, what is dual enrollment? And so, you'll also hear it called concurrent enrollment. And it's when a student is enrolled in two separate academically-related institutions. And so, we're really proud this year. We have Griffins at Los Alamitos High School who are concurrently enrolled or duly enrolled in both Los Alamitos High School and Cypress College. So, they're taking college classes on the Los Alamitos High School campus for college credit after the regular Griffin Day comes to an end. And so, the evolution of this really started our last school year. And so, a big thank you to Dr. Stone and his team, who partnered with my office, getting great direction from the board. So, I really can't thank you enough for trusting our office and letting us endeavor into new areas to start meeting with Cypress and talking about what it could look like for Griffins to be duly enrolled both at the high school and Cypress Community College. And so, this spring, we had a series of parent and student information nights. We rolled out to the high school classrooms, informed students about their options. We opened up registration on campus and did survey course interest. We had over 800 Griffins interested in being duly enrolled in the two institutions. And so, we're proud that this fall, we are off the ground and running with 120 Griffins duly enrolled in Los Alamitos High School and at Cypress Community College. And so, the survey that we did with our students and families really revealed students had interest in taking courses that really fell into two domains. The first being what's called an IGETC class, an intersegmental general education transfer curriculum. So, these are basically courses that are guaranteed transfer credits at any UC or CSU so that students know as they're embarking in this coursework, they're making a dent in those units that they will one day need either to move towards an AA or a BA or BS. The other area that we had students interested in was industry-based certification. And so, when we looked at the students who were interested in their coursework at the high school and what their aspirations were when they left us, we partnered with Cypress to bring forward a cybersecurity pathway. So, we have that up and running at the high school currently. And so, currently, we're offering five courses. Multi-variable Calculus, which in the spring will be Linear Algebra. And so, we're very proud. Our own Sandra Bright, teacher at Los Alamitos High School, has actually been hired by Cypress College. And so, she's teaching that course on our campus as a college faculty member. We're offering Introduction to Business, which those students will then be eligible for the spring legal environment of business. We're offering a Cypress Counseling Experience, which is actually a two-credit course that gives students a great introduction to college and career aspirations. It's a host of assessments they take to really learn about what their strengths are as students and what their interests and passion may be when they enter the workforce. They have counselors that help connect what possible majors or meta-majors could be when they transfer out and what coursework would look like, hopefully inspiring them to take a dual enrollment class next fall or this spring to see if that type of field work really is of interest to them and enjoyable. And so, we'll be repeating that course in the spring for students who are newly interested and maybe adding on a secondary course in the spring. We also have Cybersecurity Competition Fundamentals. And in the spring, that will roll into Secure Networking. And so, that will be the first opportunity for our first cohort of cybersecurity students to earn a Cisco certificate. We're also currently offering Introduction to Sociology. And so, based on student registration, we're about to launch on October 29th. We'll see what interest is to add a replacement course in the spring for Intro to Soc. And so, 120 students accessing courses in grades 10 through 12. And so, it really is a great partnership. Not only does Cypress College provide all of these necessities for our students, but they also give us a counselor once a week for a few hours who is available to meet with our students. They can individually contract her. Professors can reach out to her and identify students who might possibly need more support. Their goal really is to make sure every Griffin successfully completes their first college class they put in front of them. There are a lot of benefits to dual enrollment that some people don't really recognize, and that is that the coursework is completely free to students. So, parents in the audience, your students can actually get a jumpstart on their college units for free. The district picks up the cost of the textbooks, and Cypress Community College access grants that provide the rest of the funding for families. In addition, it's another way for our students outside of the advanced placement arena to pick up early college credits and be on their way to a path beyond high school. So, spring 2019 registration, as I shared, opens October 29th, and our special admin packets are due from any student at the high school by November 16th to counselors. Any questions I can answer?
No, that's fantastic.
Just thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you so much for your support.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Kaminski, you are up to tell us all about the great news at Oak.
Good evening, Dr. Barki, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Crop, Cabinet, and the Oak community of Lions. Pretty cool. We're going to start our evening with our ASB officers, who are going to come up and give you just a quick little tidbit about what they do. So, I'd like to introduce Nico Minch Casanova and Riley Yu.
Good evening, President Bark, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Crop. My name is Nico Minch Casanova, ASB president.
And I am Riley Yu, ASB Vice President, presenting on behalf of the Oak Associated Student Body.
This year, Oak ASB has several goals that we are going to accomplish. First, we are actively encouraging more school spirit. We want all of our Oak Lions to show that they are one of the pride. Second, ASB is working towards making Oak a more inclusive environment. This year, representatives of all grade levels are inputting their input to ASB.
Already this year, we have made progress towards our goals. For Peace Week, students participated in themed dress-up days and collaborative lunch activities to promote the idea of togetherness. Each student signed a poster with a set of wings to represent that Oak students lift each other up. Moreover, to increase participation, in Oak students wearing Oak gear on Fridays, we have created a monthly competition in which the winning class gets to display a super cool trophy. Finally, we have implemented a quote of the day in our daily announcements to remind our students to be the best they can be.
This week, we are celebrating Red Ribbon Week and pledging to say no to drugs. Today, we all wore neon because we were all just too bright for drugs. We are also working on special upcoming projects that would help spread positive messages every day. Some examples of this are our door decorations decorating contests and creating positive messages on our bathroom door stalls.
We are excited to grow as leaders and work with our peers as we become a stronger community. We love that we are all part of the pride. And as always, hear us roar!
Thank you, Nico and Riley. I'd just like to say they are under the direction of Mrs. Sigmund, who is here tonight, our So, I get to talk about Oak Middle School. And I'd like to just thank the board for allowing me this joyful opportunity to be their principal because really, every day, they make me smile. And to our staff, they're not all here tonight, but many of them are. And I just want to say a giant shout-out because you really make that magic today. So, it is whether you teach, or whether you're in the office, or whether you're helping us with our site maintenance, you all make a huge difference in what we do. And I am grateful for the work that you do every day. Very proud. So, here's Oak Middle School. And we're excited, we have some new faces. So, welcome to Mr. Mendrin, our new Assistant Principal. We also have a couple of new faces in the office. We have Mrs. Cairns, who's our new registrar. And then, we have Mrs. Morrison, who is fondly known as Miss Mo. And then, Mr. Maya is also new to our staff this year. So, welcome aboard, and we're glad you're here. And we're not quite done because we also have Dr. Arias, who's brought a ray of sunshine into our drama program. And so, we're grateful to have you, Dr. Arias. And Mrs. Lozoya has joined us on our team as well as part of our resource program. So, welcome to you both. So, at Oak, we're really about keeping to the priorities of our board, and increased academic achievement, of course, is always at the top. Many of the things that we do are just part of what we consider to be our regular routine, rigorous course content, collaboration. But we also offer an amazing amount of before, during, and after-school support. And this year, we're instituting Oak Time, which is going to be an advocacy program where teachers team up with students who just need the little extra help and support during their school day. So, in academics, to the math team. We are transforming mathematics this year. They went to Stanford University, of all places. It was really great. And they are super excited about the work that they did with Joe Bowler. And we are just ecstatic about the conversations that we are having about mathematics. For our students, the new wipe-off write-on desks allow them to show their thinking at all times. And so, every math room on our campus have these available to students. And they write on them all the time, don't you? Yes, as they nod their heads. Science at Oak is just in full bloom with the next-generation science standards. It is really inquiry-based. And so, we have students all over our campus, all the time, creating, filming, asking questions, watching things change color, watching things change temperature, seeing pennies move off the top of bottles, and keeping amazing scientific journals. In English, it really is extraordinary to see the level of discourse that kids have about authors and characters. And so, we really love going into our English classrooms. And this year, shared inquiry. We spent a day with Creco Michaels from the Great Books Foundation. And the shared inquiry really gives kids an opportunity to go that one step further into really looking at the richness of literature. History, social science, we love history at Oak. And this year, we've gotten some escape boxes, and they have been a big deal in our social studies class as they find their way out of these boxes and looking again at the parallels between history and current events and how that relates to us. With data, we love data. I love data. And so, I'm sure you've seen this all, but the great news about ELA is that we continue to improve, we continue to grow, we continue to reflect. And this year, we're ranked 5 in Orange County for English Language Arts. So, we're super excited. In math, we continue to also grow and make great strides in how we're looking at kids thinking mathematically. And again, the work that we're doing with the groups, the math consortium group that we're doing, and the leaders that we have on our Oak campus is just beyond dreamy in terms of math and where we're going. So, we really want to celebrate our students. And so, Lion Pride Awards are a big deal for us. We hold them once a month, and we invite our parents in. We surprise the students. And of course, the parents stand there with pom-poms and signs and embarrass you terribly, but it is so worth it. Monthly recognition. Mr. Mendrin really liked, he'd be sending these pictures home. Look at this. I put this up just for him. But we give out Lion Paw Awards monthly. And we found that in middle school, kids take their certificates and they stick it in their backpacks, and then you never see them again. And so, we decided that if they come up to the office and we take a picture, we can email it home to their families before they ever arrive. And then, it gives you points at home. So, these are the pictures we send home, if you can believe that. And it's so fun, and the parents love it, and we get lots of great feedback from our parents. Athletics is a huge portion of what we do at Oak. And PE is no joke, that is for sure. They are serious out there. And so, in our gym, Fitness Fridays... And so, in our gym, Fitness Fridays are dedicated to building skills and strength, and then, of course, during the week, we have a multitude of various sports that kids are learning. For activities, you know, for us, that's what makes it so joyful during the course of the year, but our Lion Pride kickoff, at the beginning before school ever starts, we invite every family to come, pick up your schedule, walk the campus, meet some old friends, and make some new ones, and it is just a joyful moment for everyone to come on campus before we ever even open our doors for school. Peace Week, that was a lot of fun, and they talked a little bit about that, but we had all kinds of activities going on, and we have to remind ourselves that people exhibiting appreciation and compassion for everyone is really what we're about at Oak, and so we really do want to lift each other up. Fun Fridays, my personal favorite, because that's where I learned to dance. Fun Fridays, we dance every Friday in the amphitheater, and it is just great fun. They are very patient, teaching me how to move, and I've learned the shark song movements, which is really great, yeah, they teach me everything. Our clubs are amazing, and this year, we have our very first surfing club, and they actually meet at the beach on the weekends, and they surf. We have our brand-new Science Olympiad team, and these are our directors, Mr. Miko, Ms. Mo, and Mr. Maya, and this is our new team, and we're super excited. We have three or four competitions, I think, three this year? Three, he's holding up three. Three competitions this year, and we're excited, they're already studying hard. Our Expressions Lounge, this is brand-new. We've opened a lounge at lunch for students to be able to have a place to actually look in each other's eyes and speak to each other. We know that in the realm of films and social media, sometimes we forget the human aspect, and so we put out board games for kids, and so we have Scrabble and Monkala and puzzles, and thank you, Sekola Elliott, I know you're in the room, but this is your dream, and so thank you for making it happen. We love our Expressions Lounge, so thank you. Astronomy Night, we just had this, and that is a real picture of the moon just a few nights ago from the telescopes in front of our school in the quad, and our local Seal Beach Astronomy Club comes out, and they help support our eighth graders, and we had quite a crowd, and it was a wonderful evening. With the arts, you saw a little bit tonight, we have six choirs under the direction of Mr. Mizuki. We love our choirs, getting ready for a big show coming up next week. We have our jazz band, and our orchestra, and our regular band and advanced band under the direction of Mr. Harold, who's also in the room tonight, so thank you for your leadership and orchestra. And then we also have ukuleles that Mrs. Reynolds teaches, and I know she's here this evening, and you know, people go, "Ukuleles, really?" But we put it on the wheel for a reason, so that kids get the experience to taste a little bit of music, and when they learn to play, they sound really good, and they make their parents go out and buy them ukuleles, it's awesome. And then our drama program, we have a brand-new facelift in our drama room, and we just had Antigone Now, it was an amazing production, and Dr. Arias has really taken over the drama program, and it is just spectacular. We also have advanced art, advanced art under the direction of Mrs. Vanderlinen, who is here this evening, and the advanced art drawing is incredible. We just, we're in a contest in Seal Beach just recently. And the digital art, which continues on under the direction of Mr. Sean Shealy in our computer arts program, and it's just super exciting. Oops, my error, sorry. Our priority two, safe, healthy, and drug-free, we just had our all-district Great Shakeout, and we have an amazing plan that helps us stay safe and accountable during earthquakes. We also include all of these activities that make us a safe place to be, and so Red Ribbon Week and the Peace Week activities are really great. Our sixth-grade summit, I'm just going to talk a little bit about that on the next slide. And so, we had Oak Cares, which stands for Compassion, Action, Responsibility, Empathy, and Support. The students under, they went through a variety of rotations in classes where they learned mindfulness, they learned communication skills, they learned how to be part of the community. Our very own staff at Oak helped teach some of those classes, along with Embassy Consulting, and I know they're here tonight, too, wearing their Oak Care shirts, which is really great. All the kids got shirts, they got notebooks, and as you look at the slides, this is just, this was literally yesterday, but it was a spectacular day of togetherness and unity at school, and it has given us a foundation to take that next step into how we want to treat others, how we want to be treated, and moving forward into making Oak just a great place. So, there were so many pictures, I just couldn't pick one, so I threw a bunch in, but each one of them got those notebooks. It started with sixth graders, so all you seventh and eighth graders in the room are going, "What? We didn't have that." It's coming, stay tuned. So, Los Al cares, again, this was our day, and we just want to thank the board, and Dr. Crop, and Mr. Vlasic, and Embassy Consultants for making this dream come true, because we have worked on this for months to get this going. For Priority Three, oh yay, yes, clap for that, that was awesome. For Priority Three, communication is really about getting that message out to parents, and parents, every Sunday night at 7:00 PM, rain or shine, it comes into your inbox via your email, whether you want to open it or not, it is there, and we're very excited because our open rate is about 75%, which is pretty good. And so, everybody reads our Lion's Roar, and what's really fun about it is that we know middle schoolers, you don't go home and tell your parents what you did, and when they say, "What'd you do at school?", you go, "Oh, you know, I don't know, we had fun, we had a good time." Well, I send the week home in pictures, and everybody gets to see what that looks like. So, it's very fun, and it's every Sunday night. We also use our school messenger and our websites as well. Priority Four, about maximizing resources, and I think this is critical on how to get the most steam, and so Leif has been an amazing supporter for us in terms of giving us grants for our STEAM efforts. Our innovation grants, we just finished our Step It Up celebration today, but all of that money we raise helps to go support our innovation grants, which could be anything from building or getting desks in our classrooms that are innovative to sound systems for our drama department. So, we appreciate our PTA, and our PTA president is here today, Marita Frank, if you're still in the room, thank you for your leadership, we love it. And our connections to Oak and Los Al High School has never been stronger, so we appreciate all of that that we get from them. And Priority Five, really maintaining modern facilities, I'm a little partial, but I think there's no campus more beautiful than Oak. It is really fabulous, people walk on and they feel how good it looks, and we're just so proud. So, Dani, I know you're in the audience tonight, thank you for keeping our campus clean and beautiful, appreciate that. It takes a village. So, the last part that I leave you with is a little short sort of vignette of our school, and Mr. Harold, surprise, but I put the music to it, that is our jazz band, because I knew we couldn't bring them tonight. So, what you hear are Oak students in our jazz band playing behind the photographs for this. And there you have Oak.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaminski, and now I understand you have a very special hero at the heart award.
I do. So, I would like to call up Dr. Jim Chang, who is here from the Global Culture Education Foundation. So, I have a little something to read, and every year, we honor heroes of the heart that make a difference for Oak, and this year, we are honoring the Global Culture Education Foundation. Bear with me, I gotta put my specs on. Here we go, now I can see. Okay, so, you know, the most important gifts in life aren't material things, they are gestures, donations of time and energy. The Global Culture Education Foundation has played an integral part of helping our Oak community to celebrate cultural diversity. Each year, they have worked tirelessly to provide visitations from middle schools in China. The opportunity to host students from China has brought our world closer. Our students have greatly benefited from learning firsthand from their peers in China. Last year, our host families, teachers, and students learned alongside each other. The smiles were universal with no interpretation necessary. We're also very grateful for the beautiful displays for Chinese New Year and the willingness to teach our students how to wear the lion costumes, play the drums, and learn simple greetings in Chinese. This year, we had Oak families that participated in the annual trip to China, and this opportunity of a lifetime will be remembered forever. Our families are still talking about the Great Wall, the pandas, and the beautiful Terracotta Warriors. Even though our friends from the Global Culture Education Foundation do not have children at Oak, they have made us feel part of the family. To Jennifer and Sean, who currently are in China, and Dr. Chang, we thank you for sharing your world with us. Thank you for your endless commitment and support of cultural celebrations, and thank you all for all you do. From our Oak family to yours, we say xie xie.
Let me set this down here, it's heavy. On behalf of Global, with all the volunteers that we have, we have a lot of volunteers, they work behind the scenes, work tirelessly, and we are honored to be part of the Oak family as well as Los Al family, and to help the students to gain a wider perspective, and hopefully you will succeed or thrive in the Global Village. And we do this with passion and enthusiasm, and most importantly, I think, I think we do this with this heart here. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. And just a quick little aside, I know that Mrs. Russell and Dr. Crop, and Mrs. Kattulie and myself had a chance to go to China with the Global Ed Foundation, and it was really a spectacular experience, one that I know I personally will never forget, and the greatest piece that I take away from it is that the world is really very small, and you don't realize how small it is until you travel and realize that kids in China are just like you, and they do exactly the same things you do. I just don't understand the language, but when I look at them, I have to smile because it just feels like we're home. So, if you have the opportunity to travel and go to China with the Foundation, I highly encourage you to do so, because it will be something you will have in your hearts forever. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Thank you, Mrs. Kaminski. We're going to take a recess in a second, and stick around because we have some pictures to take, and there's some cookies in the back. I forgot to mention, our board vice president, Diana Hill, is not here tonight because she is at an international conference for her work, so she couldn't make it tonight. So, stick around, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. All right, we are back. Hopefully, everybody got a cookie.
I didn't.
I forgot to get a cookie, too.
I didn't get a cookie.
I don't need it.
I have water.
So, next up is staff and community participation. If you want to participate, please fill out one of these white cards. First up is Scott Fayette.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Scott Fayette, I happen to be the McCullough PTA president, I have three lovely children, over-involved parent, helicopter's been used, and becoming a professional PETA. Think about it, and you'll forget it later. What I want to talk about is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, and that's the safety of our children, and I want to talk about children that are endangered. This district has done really a fabulous job, been very proactive, and even has gotten accolades from the Orange County Department Sheriff Hutchins, is that, about what they've done as far as like, big thing, the most horrific thing that I can really imagine at a school site, which is an active shooter. We've got all these resources that we've dedicated and we put forth. Took a half-day of training when they had the teacher day, the morning they did stuff, then the afternoon, they practiced drills about that, so they could be prepared. We've got these big, thick, black, very masculine fences, which Sherry knows how I feel about those, but they're very, that's a good deterrent. In the new budget, they've allocated another $8 million, which is all speculative, but for more safety, video, fencing upgrades, and watchtowers or surveillance towers. So, all of this effort, resources shows how important student safety is to us. But I want to bring you down, and I want you to go small-scale, and I want you to think about the individual students that are endangered. You have, at my kid's elementary school, a second-grade boy who would run around and grab the private parts of other boys every recess, every lunch. This kid was in the principal's office twice a week for the entire year. This kid was in the principal's office twice a week for the entire year. The behavior didn't change. There was no restorative justice. How do you say that that child isn't endangered when you gotta look at them in the eye in the morning, and they don't want to get out of bed or go to school, and they're crying? Your child is being harassed. Trump is gonna send you back to Mexico. You're gonna die down there because they don't have any medical care. And your child steps up, goes to the teacher, and I am standing with him, and the teacher says, "That's not so bad. Why are you upset?" And the teacher proceeds, after the rest of the class comes in, I am still present in the classroom, and humiliates him in front of the class. How is that child, my child, ever gonna feel safe to go to an authority figure and say, "I'm being bullied"? That's my time.
Thank you, Scott. Barbara Farrell.
Good evening, President Barky, Honorable Board Members, and Superintendent Crop. Superintendent Crop was generous enough to meet with me yesterday. We discussed a lot of things that came out of the focus group. Focus group members have been in contact with me back and forth. I think we're on the same page for the most part. And we're talking about, well, it's the social media, which wasn't one of our top priorities, but it is for certain folks. Professional development, which we think needs to come right away so that teachers respond to issues in an appropriate way. When people are being called names, there's no "small" name, there's no "it's not that bad." So we think that the principals, the teachers, and all of staff, they need a higher level of diversity training and understanding how that is going to... That'll translate into exactly what you want, what you're looking for. So that's one of the priorities, and then, of course, the appropriate curriculum. And Dr. Crop is working on that, too. So one of the things, feedback I got, was that they want to make, the focus group wants to make sure that the community has some input on a number of people who take part in the task force. And Dr. Crop and I already were in much agreement, and she's already told you, that she's gonna get a facilitator who understands this problem and these issues, who can help to lead the task force, and that's an outside person. Because you can't do this kind of thing from within. I've been, done it corporately, I've done it in nonprofits, and you gotta get someone from outside. So one of the things they look to also is to calendar meetings up so that when the task force is put in place, they're not meeting once a month in the beginning. They need to have more meetings, weekly, bi-weekly, something like that, more often to get off the ground and get things going. But as I said, you know, the first thing is if you have the professional development started, that's gonna be, that could happen before the task force is fully formed. So just to make sure that things keep rolling along at the pace that we all want it to. Let me see. How would the task force work be reported to the community is one of the questions. Because I don't think that... Oops. So that's a question. So thanks so much for listening.
Thank you, Barbara. Katha Rae.
Hello, everyone. First of all, thank you for your time. I know many of you have a profession outside of this. So doing this every other week and what you do outside, I appreciate that. I was standing back and listening to all the things happening at school and looking at those photos of these kids. I got a little teary-eyed because our students are beautiful. They are. And we're here because, first of all, I'm thankful. I'm thankful for what Sherry Crop has done in the last few weeks, bringing the task force, the focus group, together to talk about the things that we are passionate about, our experiences. And I've never been in a room with so many people who work and took their time off on Fridays twice a week, all of us, right? To be in the room to share about what we're grateful for and what we want to see better. But I'm here to ask that this clarity and transparency continues on because those kids in the room, they are very diverse. They vary across race, class, gender, family orientation. And our curriculum, to really build tolerance, they should be seen in that way. But what we also ask is that whoever the task force is, like that PTA Human Resource Group, there should be transparency. I'm a room parent. I lead Weaver's Math Decathlon Team every year. I have still not heard about the PTA Human Resource Group. So there's a group that's leading this work for PTA, and nobody knows about it. So there's this idea that we would really appreciate transparency. We would really appreciate openness, and also that the group represents the diversity that takes place, and that they should have experience. Because there's nothing worse than a person trying to talk about the lives of someone else, right? I cannot speak for other families because I don't have that experience. And by me doing so, I can actually end up essentializing and stereotyping that individual. So having the right group is so important, so we don't do harm. We want to do good. So I come from a place of gratitude, but I ask, as we continue to move forward, please consider closely how groups are formed and how these groups... No human being is knowledgeable about all things, because we only see things through our set of eyes. How will these leadership groups continue to receive support so that they can also lead? How can they learn to see the world across race, class, gender, family orientation so that they can provide learning opportunities that represent all that? Because none of us can do all that by ourselves. But I want us to think about this and continue to share out what you're doing. And we're here, just like the focus group, 40 people taking Friday off, right? Twice, two Fridays in a row, because we really love our children and all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena.
Hello. Excuse me. Hi, my name's Elena Anderson, and I'm a McGaw parent. I live in Seal Beach, and another Seal Beach resident informed me before their city council meeting yesterday that there had been a deficit in the school resource officer coverage at Los Alamos High School. And I was hoping that we could get more information about that today. And also, by the way, I do appreciate that there's some movement happening with the Human Relations Social Media Council and Task Force. But these dates, school started on October, I mean, August 8th, and the SRO officer had gone on a medical leave. And I think that it was short-term, and then it kept extending and extending. And then on September 26th, when we still had no SRO staffing Los Alamos High School, there was an emergency meeting with the staff from both cities, both police departments and the district. And I think that's when there was a decision come to have the Seal Beach Police Department take over from Los Al, which was having staffing issues. And our Seal Beach Department Police Officer will be there from October 29th through December 1st. In the, in the, all the paperwork that came into the Seal Beach minutes, it says that there were 115 days where the district, it sounds like, was paying for SRO coverage that wasn't happening. So I'm hoping for some explanation about that because I know that we all value our student safety so much, and we talk about the fences and the school resource officer. And as a parent, I never heard about any of this until a citizen who doesn't even have a child told me that it was, and he just likes to go to the city council meetings and read all the information. So I'm hoping that we can have some transparency on that issue because I know that safety of our students is near and dear to your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, by the way, public comment is not a Q and A. So we're not allowed to by law, because of the Brown Act, to have a conversation about questions that are asked. But I'm gonna ask, hang on, I'm gonna ask Dr. Crop when we're all finished with the public that wants to speak to respond to a few things. Next is Dr. Houghton.
So it's agenda number 11 for 10, it's one of the agenda numbers. So I wasn't sure if I ask questions now, whether I'd gotten dressed then or not. I was just putting it out there. Thank you.
Mill.
Thank you, Dr. Barky. Thank you, Dr. Crop, too. Board, Dr. Crop and Cabinet. You all know who I am, but for the sake of our televised audience, let me just introduce myself again, is I'm retired Army Lieutenant Colonel Dr. Mill Houghton. And for the last six years, I've had, I'm gonna call it the pleasure of functioning as the liaison between the Rossmore Homeowners Association and the school board, or the school district. And so in that capacity, you all know that I've probably been here at least 80% of the time, sitting in your board meetings. And most of the time, by this time of the evening, I'm the only community member still out there in the audience. But what it has is it's given me an opportunity to see you in action for a long period of time. And I think that's really important. I know from watching you, you don't necessarily always agree on every issue, but when it comes out here, nothing is ever personal. Everything is done, is very professional in how it's conducted. I know we have brought issues to the, to you on the board that have been concerns from RHA. We've been able to work through them, we've come to resolution on them. And so, you know, I hear people saying, "Well, you're not available. The board isn't available to us." If they're not available to you, it's because they aren't here expressing their concerns. It's not that you're not available. This time, available in community comments is there on every meeting. And so, like, now, as a member of the Personnel Commission, I know that we have a representative, in fact, I was talking to him later, Danny Salas, who comes, and he's a representative from the Classified Employee Union. So we don't have problems with the union because, the classified union, because we're there and we have a good exchange with them. If the certified units have a problem, then why aren't they here to talk about what their problems are instead of waiting every two years to talk about it when it's a campaign issue? You know, I mean, we're not gonna solve problems that way. So anyway, I just wanted to share that piece with you because I know that, that I've been observing you, and you're probably all aware of it, but sometimes it's nice to hear somebody else say, "Thank you."
Thank you, Mill. Dr. Crop, if you wouldn't mind responding to a couple of those issues.
Thank you, really. I can't, Phil, I don't, I can't talk about the students other than, you know, we really take those complaints seriously, and it is always bothersome. And, but moving on to the SRO, that is on the agenda tonight. And so Meg, I think, had mentioned something earlier to me that she would pull up, but I'm free to talk about it now, and feel free to still do that. So we did have a police officer go out on medical leave. And when that happens, that's always a problem because it got extended. So you don't anticipate that happening, but it did. And so I'm really proud to say that the three agencies, the district, Seal Beach, and Los Alamos, sorry, did reach, that's hilarious. And you know what? I don't like that buzzer, everyone, and neither probably do you. And so that, I'm so, I'm so unorganized now in my thoughts, wait. So the three organizations met, and really, we reached a quick agreement. Thank you very much. And I know Dr. Barky was there, as was Mr. Edgar. And so we were able to quickly and reach an agreement. So the Seal Beach, City of Seal Beach, is going to provide a police officer starting tomorrow through December, and then we go into winter break. I don't have that exact date in front of me, but it's on the contract, the MOU for approval. And then after winter break, Los Alamos expects to fully have their SRO ready to take back over. And the SRO, the Seal Beach Police Officer has been trained as an SRO. So right now, Los Alamos has a detective at our high school. It's just not the original SRO who's been out. Starting tomorrow, granted, if the board approves it, Seal Beach will have an SRO on our high school campus. Starting after the winter break, Los Alamos Police will have an SRO. For the days, per our agreement, we pay the city our portion of the SRO, and Seal Beach pays the City of Los Alamos their portion. Once this extended leave got to the point where, I don't know if people fully realize that, and without saying the personal things of this officer, you don't expect them to be out day one, or of course, the reaction would have been different. But it's still extended. So the City of Los Alamos has to reimburse, and rightfully so, the City of Seal Beach and the district for our portion of the SRO that we had paid for when one wasn't provided. During that time, the City of Los Alamos still did provide some coverage as they were able, as well as at some night events. But they still have chosen to reimburse us and did not try to make a case for this hours, this day, or this hours.
So my understanding, in talking to Chief Nunez and Chief Miller, is that even though our SRO was on medical leave, they were still providing coverage from patrol officers that would come on campus and rotate during the day. So it's not as if we weren't being covered by, with a, with a uniformed officer. They weren't a dedicated SRO.
That's right.
And the point of the SRO is not just forced protection, although that's part of it, but it's also for them to be a resource, to do a lot of things with education, interacting with the kids and so forth.
Right.
And so with this new position, and then ultimately, a new dedicated SRO, we'll get back to that original tent. And it's unfortunate that this happened, that the SRO went out on medical leave, and they did the best they could to cover in that situation.
Because they were short an officer, and it also wasn't ideal for us. And really, a big hats off to the City of Seal Beach, and this would have come up later, but thank you for, you know, we had someone speak to it, which is great also. But it really is hats off to Seal Beach, who really put this together in a hurry and have come forward with an officer. And then another person mentioned the PTA, but I don't think that the speaker is still here. But during the focus group meeting, that was brought up, and the Chair of the PTA Diversity Committee was there, and she took the time to explain it. It's been part of the 4th District PTA Toolkit for some time. And so the reason that people don't know about it is that they're just forming it. It's new. And so our PTA Council decided to do this. And, you know, the role of PTA is to advocate for all children. And I think the more people that want to have conversations and come together and grow in their understanding and learning, the better. I also, we have a couple of PTA members that are on, that were on the focus group. And so I feel like they did their best job trying to explain that that really was parent-initiated and parent-led, certainly not by me or any of you. And I don't know how that committee will evolve, but we'll see. And then maybe later, one of them might want to come and share what they've done. But I fully suspect, although I can't really speak for them, but our longstanding history with PTA is we're such a supportive unit for all kids and for sites. And I would anticipate that continuing. And Meg, you were at those PTA meetings also, and Karen, you were at our focus group meetings. So I feel like we've had quite a bit of board involvement in both of those, and I really appreciate the involvement of that. Thank you very much. And I know, Dr. Barky, you were involved in the trying to fix the SRO situation instrumental, so thank you, thank you.
Dr. Crop, I just, as I understand, and we've gone back and forth on SROs over the 14 years I've been on the board, getting the cities to support us. And it's, really, this SRO is the city's employee. And we contract with them, or try to help, and they've been that way. So we're really kind of, in a sense, have to work with them. And I think they've worked very well with us. And Dr. Barky, you know, as yourself, having been a, what do you call it, a reserve sheriff, you know? It's, law enforcement goes where it has to go. And sometimes those officers have to be pulled off campus. But I just know we're doing a much better job than we were doing 14 years ago with SROs and with our communities. And the fact, I think, you know, we haven't gone into it, is we have offices and things. and things in our, in our school sites where the officers can come and get a cup of coffee, can sit in there, be in there when they're not even, you know, just to check in. So we're doing a lot of things to try to help in that process. So it's not like there's nobody been at our high school.
Thank you.
In this time.
And I do want to say thank you, Mr. Vlasic, our Director of Safety. So he did tell me that the police off, the SRO was out on medical leave. And I'm trying to figure out what I am allowed to say. And it's unfortunate, I will say that. So the city did try to cover, but they're short on officers when that happens. And so we're just really happy that we've had now a full-time officer on our high school campus and wish that there hadn't been a break in that. And just glad that we've rectified that. And so, thank you. And I certainly know, Chris, Mr. Vlasic, you did everything you could to try to get that to happen sooner. And I appreciate your efforts too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have one item that's being removed from the consent agenda that will be, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, President Barkey.
Information presentations, I apologize, I almost skipped you. California dashboards.
So school districts are required to annually review and update their local performance indicators using a self-reflection toolkit for each of the five state priorities. We're also required to make this information public through the California dashboard. And so we're proud to share that our report has been completed in the process and that we have met all of the requirements under the California dashboard, under each of the five priorities. And so a copy of this report will be available online for anyone in the public or the community who'd be interested in reviewing our new dashboard indicators during the annual release in December. And so I'd actually also like to thank Melissa Davis, our Director of Account Assessment and Accountability, who rewrote our indicators and released that report. So proud to report that we've met all five indicators.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, where was I? Consent agenda. So consent item C is being removed and will be brought back at a, at another meeting. And so now we have consent items A through B and D through O. Yep, I will second.
I do have a comment.
Sure.
The reason why I was going to pull the item that was discussed about the SRO is because I am always very happy when we can get three entities, the City of Seal Beach, the City of Los Alamos, and the school district to come together to an amicable decision that benefits children. And sometimes it's harder than others, but I believe that on this particular one, everybody wanted to do what was the best for kids. And I'm just very glad that we work so well with our city partners.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Any other discussion? Then all in favor of approving consent items A through B and D through O, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Now we move on to action items. And first is action item, which is second reading and approval of revised board policy, zero five four zero, comprehensive safety plan. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Mr. President, and team members of the board. This is a second reading. Our first reading was at the October 9th board meeting. And it really is just updating our board policy regarding our comprehensive safety plans, adding in violent intruder safety plans, annual trainings as well for staff and for students, and then an accompanying administrative regulation that doesn't necessarily need to be approved tonight. It really has much more detail for that violent intruder safety plan.
Very good. I'd like to move approval of this second reading.
I'll second.
I'd like to comment to this as well. It's fairly routine that we're doing this, but it's really important. So we're basically memorializing in writing as a, as a policy, some of the hard work that Mr. Vlasic has been doing over the last, I don't know, five years, three years, whatever it is, a long time. And his work has been so fantastic that he won the Safe Schools Award for 2018 for the work that he did. And so this is really an update of his hard work on behalf of our district. And I believe that we're the only district in Orange County, there's 27 of them, that has such a policy to basically mandate that we do this violent intruder drills and training on a regular basis. It's not unlike we are required in ed code to have fire drills and fire safety training. Now at least Los Al has added to that, that in addition to the routine fire drills that were mandated by ed code to have, that we have now mandated and put in writing the violent intruder drills and training and protocols and so forth, that Chris has been working on, that I think is very, very important. So thank you, Chris, for your hard work. And any other board comments on that? Then all in favor of approval of the second reading for the comprehensive safety plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is approval to elect our very own Megan Cattulli to serve on the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. And I will move approval of that. And then we'll speak a little bit more to that.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Would you like me to explain?
Would you please?
Yes. Okay. First of all, I'm the only one on the ballot, so I'm pretty sure that I will be elected for the county. And this is a group of, yeah, I'm just, I'm not being modest, I'm being realistic here. It is a committee that is, you are elected according to your supervisory district. And we, when you want to change the number of board members that is on a, on a school board, if you need to change your boundaries at all, if you have a group of people who want to leave and go with another school district, or if you need to go into districts within the school districts for your election, you come before this board. And we either meet once a year or a lot. We're coming often a lot, so I'm hoping the next year will be not very often.
All right.
But it's important. You need to be a school board member or an ex-school board member. That's the only qualification.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And next is a resolution. So this will be a roll call. And it's a resolution for procurement of technology equipment. And Dr. Nien, if you'd speak to this, please.
Yes. So this will allow the district to qualify for E-rate funding. So you'll give us the discount for E-rate when we purchase our technology equipment.
Okay, very good. And I'll move approval of this resolution, 2018, 2019 dash 13.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Dr. Barkey.
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli.
Aye.
All right. Resolution carries unanimously four zero. Next is another resolution, 2018-19 dash 15, supporting Red Ribbon Week. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Mr. President, and team members of the board. Tonight, you had before you as a resolution decreeing October 22nd through October 26th as Red Ribbon Week. And I know earlier today in the high schools report, we heard of some of the various social activities to get kids involved, which is around dress and things of that sort. But really, the schools address it much more attentively with pro-social behaviors throughout the week with lessons. And also culminating this week, we have a prescription takeback for the community happening at McCullough Middle School on Saturday. So if the community has any prescription drugs that they want to return back, they can do as well. And I love that it's during Red Ribbon Week as well.
I just want to comment because a lot of the drug takebacks do not take liquids. And I understand they will be taking liquids, so.
Oh, that's very good. So I'll move approval of the resolution for Red Ribbon Week.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I'd like to add that, you know, it's kind of fun. We wear our red little bracelets and it's kind of cute. And we pass a resolution and so forth. But it's really important work. And it's not the only work that we do from a substance abuse prevention, education work throughout our district. So I know that throughout the year, we have multiple educational programs, both for adults and for students. We have multiple programs at all our schools to help educate the kids and help deter drug use and so forth. So it's symbolic for sure, but it's more than just that. It's important. I know in my office, I have nurses and employees that attend very, that have kids that attend various districts. So it's not just Los Al. This is happening all over the county. And they have a whole range of activities at various school sites and that they all have unique and customized for their own district and so forth. So this is a district-wide, maybe it's nationwide, I don't know, but I know it's district-wide program that I think is very important, should be taken seriously. And I know I proudly wear this bracelet, and I hope you will too.
Dr. Barkey, just want to say one more thing regarding, you know, all the efforts that we put for, I think you were on the original substance abuse task force, the two of us were on that. And one of the things that we did was institute the alternative to suspension for first-time offenses for students. And I recall, the first year that we did this, we reduced our expulsion rate at the high school by 50% or something to that effect. So, I mean, we are having huge effects in this area. And I know that's way beyond Red Ribbon Week, but just to reiterate the fact that we're doing beyond that.
Yep. Thank you, Karen. Any other comments? All right, roll call, Tina.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Dr. Barkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Cattulli.
Aye.
This resolution passes unanimously four zero. Next is approval of a warrants. Warrants are the, are the district's checkbook for in-between board meetings. The warrants are presented to board meetings, to board members are available publicly as well. And we review them prior to approval. So I will move approval of the warrants as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We got our, I got my questions answered. Duplicate pages. Yes, and they duplicated pages. There's not enough that there's. And when you're reading 35 pages with, of checks listed, and two of them, I thought, this is a quiz.
You're paying attention.
I was paying attention.
Okay. All in favor of approval of warrants, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next is acceptance of donations. And we go a little bit slow here because the donations that have come in from the community since the last board member, board meeting are scrolled on the screen. And we can see them up there, total monetary donations, just over 11,000 and year-to-date, just shy of a million, which is incredible. We are very blessed to have such a generous community that supports our efforts.
We got that trust donation too.
Absolutely. All right. All in favor of accepting the donations, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There you go. Thank you, Tina.
It's much more efficient to vote before.
We just, we just want to make sure you're paying attention. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. We're on to classified and certificated personnel report. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Mr. President, and team members of the board. The classified and certificated personnel report reflect the personnel actions since our last board meeting, and we recommend approval as submitted.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move approval of the classified and certificated personnel report.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And we are on to communication. Mrs. Russell.
Yes, I did the, the day after our last board meeting, the walk to McGaw. We met, they met at two different places, but Meg was there. And also, we walked from Pavilion's parking lot. And it was a good thing, they were going to start to slurry the street down my street there, behind the school. But actually, they must have got noticed because they waited to do it until after school had started and everything. So that worked out well. Then I went to the Taste for Los Al. And lots of people there, very successful. I think there were more vendors and restaurants than, than ever before. So thanks to all the people and businesses in the community that support that effort because it really does help all of our booster clubs and, and the like. And, you know, a lot of people don't know that Taste for Los Al has also given back to the community in terms of our, our all-weather track and field that we put in. I think they gave us a million dollars or somewhere around that for that. I thought it was like 200,000.
250,000.
How much?
250,000.
Oh, okay.
But they gave other money for other projects.
Yeah, I mean, that's just an example of some of the things they do. Plus, you know, there's the silent auction that all the booster clubs have, and they're able to raise money during that, that activity. And then I also went to the Seal Beach Performing Arts Organization's luncheon that they had to honor late. And Dr. Crop was there. And we had, it was very nice to see them being honored because of all of the things they do for the arts. And, you know, the woman who started this whole organization, she's phenomenal. Esther Kenyon's her name. And she's active in a lot of community organizations. And she's been working very closely with the gentleman who purchased the Bay Theater in Seal Beach. And they just got one of the signs up and the marquees almost finished. And they're working on the inside. And the guy who owns it has stated to me personally that he's willing to work with our schools for them to have performances at that theater, which will be kind of cool. The only problem we have in Seal Beach is the parking, but they're trying to work that out as well. So we'll look forward to that. Then Wednesday, I went to our SLPA, which is our special education board. And we had a huge presentation on updating our policies. When I first got on the board and when I became president, I noticed that there really didn't seem to be any policies. And since Dr. Levine has come on board, they really updated the policy. Most of these are pertaining to leaves. And this is only for our members of the SLPA who are not represented by a district and a union. So that's why they had to do that. And I participated in the two meetings of the focus group. And I really want to say that I felt that everybody who attended was heard. They all have their input. And I, I look forward to everything moving forward with a facilitator when we get one and we hire it because, you know, we've been successful at having a facilitator. When we had our safety first started up, went off with a former police officer that started that out. So I look forward to that happening. And then I went on Saturday to the McGaw Carnival. And lots of people there on activities. That's such a large field. It really affords them lots of room to do all these jump houses and, you know, face painting and whatever. Each class does a different activity. And they have a contest to see who wins. And, you know, various groups were there providing the food for them. And they had, the Lions were there cooking their hamburgers and so on. So been a busy, busy time in between board meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Boyer.
Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, Dodgers four, Red Sox five, and then the seventh inning. So the Dodgers are still batting, so we'll see what happens. Anyway, now that's out of the way. I got the chance to go to the Los Al football game against Corona Del Mar and Cerritos College. And of course, lightning struck and it was quite the show and spectacle. But I was just really pleased with how the athletic directors and everybody handled that, got everybody under the stands. I mean, we're not used to lightning and thunder and rain. So it's a shame that Corona Del Mar would not come and finish the game with us and took the tie, took the easy way out. So we'll see. But Friday night is senior night at Cerritos College at seven o'clock. We're playing Edison, our arch nemesis. And it is senior night, which is always a fun night to see the boys, our seniors graduating. And I think that'll be a great game. Our football team, I read the paper, is, is second in the Long Beach area behind Bosco. So anyway, we're looking for a good run in the playoffs. Hopefully, we'll be getting there shortly. Attended Taste for Los Al. And I always love going to that event. It's, it's a great event. Tons of people there. Dr. Barkey was there. I think I missed a few other people. I know there's so many people, but city council people, just lots of folks that you haven't seen, and parents that have been around the district. And so much is raised in terms of baskets and all the different groups. And I'm always amazed because I've been on about 500 things and I never know what I'm going to end up with. So this year, I supported the boys' ice hockey team. I bought a $20 puck and didn't win the big prize, but 20 bucks towards that. I think it's fascinating having grown up in New England, that we have an ice hockey team and a really good one at that. And tied in with the Ducks, and they just do, it's a great program and a lot of fun. If you've ever been to one of their games, it's just a lot of fun. And who would have thought in Southern California, we'd have an ice hockey team? I also had the pleasure last Friday night of attending the Canterbury Tales in our drama group. And boy, our drama program, it just gets better and better. And Stacy, Staglioni, did I say it right? It does a great job. And was just, the kids were just awesome. And the accents, the, you know, pulling it off, I just love the Old English. And it was just really, really fun and a fun event. So if you have a chance to go see a drama production, you need to go see it. I know the musical's coming this spring. And I'll tell you, if you haven't been to one of our musicals, when they put everybody together, it is awesome. Oak Choir, you heard of them here earlier tonight? They have performances the 25th, Thursday, 26th, and the 27th. So if you're not sure what to do this weekend, Saturday, get all your drugs out of your, your, Venice Academy, which I'm going to do. And from 10 to 12, you can go to McCullough and take those and get rid of those in the proper way, dispose them in McCullough. Then you can leave there. You can run over to Lee Elementary School. And they're having their carnival from 12 to 5. So so you just drop them off at 12, to the carnival, 12 to 5. And then you can go to Oak and catch the seven o'clock performance. So I'm just thinking, you've got a date night all lined up there for that day.
They're also having a drug take back at the front of Leisure World on the same day.
Oh, okay.
So if people who are watching this that want to do that, but I understand they're not taking. taking liquids, so.
Okay. Additionally, if you, if you can't make the Lee Carnival, there will be a carnival at Rosmar Elementary on November 3rd from 11 to 4. So put that on your calendar. And then on November 5th, the city of Los Alamos is celebrating the beautification of Los Alamos in the Boulevard. And they're having a get-together on, on Monday, the 5th on Serpentine from 4:30 to 6. And daylight savings time's coming pretty quick here before our next board meeting. That'll be November 4th on a Saturday, so we fall back. Halloween is coming. So I always tell people, with lots of kids in our community, and I mean, it's amazing how many kids are there, go slow. Watch out for kids that night. And it's, it's a busy, busy night, and be safe. And it's a lot of fun. I know we have the, there's the ghoul run coming up this weekend, too. So I, I'm, you know, if you're having a Rosmar, I think you should do that before.
Do the run in the morning, then the drug get back.
Before you take the drugs back. And then, okay, yeah, so yeah, I forgot. I don't, yeah, get your exercise in. And then also, I just realized, you know, time flies, you know, four years goes by. Before you know it, you blink your eyes. And Diana Hill's not here tonight, and Dr. Barki's here. But you realize that we have an election coming up. And so elections are important in our community. But Dr. Barki and Diana Hill have been great folks. And so I just appreciate the work they've done. I wish you the best on the election and how it goes. One thing that I know that I've read in through my years is the success of a school just really has to do with the continuation and the leadership and the things from the school board and the continuation. And for school boards, I've seen where they completely change over and things change. And they never get, seem to get a lot of things done. The superintendents are always going. So, Dr. Crop, you've been invaluable with our new focus group that you're, you're attacking. And the fact how fast you've gone on that and getting that going. And I think the facilitators are the right way to go. So, anyway, I just wish everybody the best with the upcoming election and the upcoming Halloween candy holiday. Don't eat too much. And we'll see you in November 13th, the next board meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Cattulli.
I'm exhausted just listening to what Dave had to say. I, as like Karen said, I did participate in the walk to school. It's kind of funny. I called my grandsons and wanted to see if they wanted to walk to school with me. And they were running light and couldn't. I said, the whole point is not to drive your kids to school. That was rather ironic. I went to my ROP meeting, which is for technical ed, and we're getting in, close to what I recall as our competition season, where depending on what, what pathway you're doing, they'll start having like your competition for health sciences and automotive and, and that kind of stuff. And so the kids and the teachers are gearing up for that, graphic design and those kinds of things, too. I was able to attend the Seal Beach Chamber meeting, which is always good to see the folks in Seal Beach. Now to the real fun stuff. I was able to go to the girls' varsity first CIF playoff. I believe it was against Corona Del Mar. My husband wanted to sit in the back row, you know, so you have a support for your back. So we were in the student section. Students love the student section, and that's why they're there. But it was a great, we won three straight. And they were, we had to fight to get them. We were, we, we beat them comfortably, but it wasn't like 25-23. It was like 25-20. So it was a great thing. And their next game is tomorrow. And I asked my granddaughter, who played on the JV team, where is it? She goes, I don't know, Grammy, but it's a 40-minute bus ride. So I don't know where it is, and I don't know where they're playing. I should have looked on their website. So best luck, Lady Griffins. And the Canterbury Tales play was astounding. And I was speaking to the teacher afterwards, and the dialects that the kids were using to represent different people in England, because they were all making this pilgrimage to Canterbury, was incredible that they were different. They weren't just the same. And she was saying that they have a dialect coach that will work with her students and will give them, and has like things set up so that you go online and you listen and you repeat it. And then they, it has a program, it kind of like coaches you. But yeah, the kids did everything, including the lighting, the setup, costumes, everything. And it was a, it was, their, their productions keep getting better and better. And I was also able to attend PTA council. And that's a good group of people. And it gives me a really good opportunity to try and kind of get a pulse of what's happening with our parents that are so actively involved on our school sites. And I appreciate them letting me sit there and listen. That's it.
All right, thank you. I too attended a walk to school event. It was to Hopkinson. And the highlight for me was we had the Husky mascot. And not to be outdone, we also had donuts.
Oh.
And a police escort. So that was kind of cool. There must have been...
We had police.
Did you?
In Seal Beach.
Yeah, all right. We had about 75 kids all walking together, the three-quarters of a mile. Now, the good news for me was there was also a greeting committee at the school. And I was lucky enough to connect with Mrs. Reed, who kindly drove me home.
Mary would not have approved. She would have said, you need to walk a few steps.
Mary had something going on. Otherwise, she would have walked. And I assured you she would have walked home, too.
Oh, yeah, she would have walked.
Taste for LoSal was fantastic. Congratulations to Larry. Diana Hill also played a role. It was, I mean, I don't know what the numbers were, but it seemed to me like the largest event for Taste for LoSal that I have seen. And it was great. Lots of, lots of, of great food, vendors there. And I thought it was a very successful event. And also, I think, as I recall, there was also an op steering meeting somewhere in the last week or two that I attended. And Dr. Nancy Nien, very expertly gave a nice presentation over Measure G. And that was fantastic. And November 13th, coming up before we know it, and Halloween. So thank you all. We'll see you at the next meeting.